Members in the Sbor Council Conference Room for a briefing to discuss tonight's agenda, which was amended to add item four I under the consent agenda, which is the confirmed reappointment of Victoria Hilt to Bremerton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to update the executive sessions reflect the time needed. And also, we had a request which was honored to remove from consent agenda tonight the professional services agreement with Imperial Parking Incorporated for Parking Enforcement and Management Services. So that will be removed from consent agenda for further study. At 5:30 PM, we moved here to the first floor chambers to conduct the council meeting in person. And because we encourage community involvement, we invite the public to join us in person or participate via remote option through Zoom or view on BCAT. For anyone who's attending in person tonight and plans to comment, please print your name clearly on the sign in sheet in the back of the room. So your name will be included in the meeting record. For more information, please refer to the public recognition and public comment process, which is also located in the back of the room. First item up tonight, we've got Mayor Wheeler with a mayor's report. Welcome, Mayor Wheeler.
All right. Good evening, Council President Younger, members of the council and members of the audience here. So quick mayor's report this evening. All right, first slide. All right, exciting, once again, exciting progress in the Charleston Business District. And so the Wykeoff wall, as you can see, has been prepped, sanded, prepped, sealed and with an outer layer of paint. And now there has been some mural work that was done previously by a community led event by Charleston Business Leadership. And today we worked with the leaders of the group and installed 10 art panels. So this work continues. It's becoming rapidly becoming a destination and a place not just for visitors, but for us as community members who live in the neighborhood to come and enjoy. And I look forward to continuing this work and this great partnership between the city and the Charleston Business District. Next slide. So this project, you probably have noticed, we are substantially complete. And so most of the pavement work is done. Early September, you'll start to see the beginning of street marking going on and being installed. Working through into October, you're going to see some signalization work and especially the signal at Sixth and Veneta. And so expect through November, when the final cleanup will be done, expect intermittent traffic moderation. And so it won't be anything like we have worked through this summer. It'll be minor, minor impacts and we're getting close to being done. Next slide. Now, this one here, this property has been an ongoing problem for this neighborhood. And so we took, I'm just going to give you the before and a little background. We took this to the hearing examiner. And first off, and then we didn't achieve compliance, so a lawsuit was filed. And so earlier this year, the decision was made to seek an order from the court authorizing the city to enter the property and remove all of the garbage refuse that had been accumulated. The court granted the order and following the resolution at Finney Bay property, the city was able to abate this property. So I just wanted to give you a before. And I tell you, the impacts on the neighborhood were substantial. And let's get an after photo here. Next slide. All right, this is the after. So this was, again, took a lot of the city resources, working through the court system. And it was important that we stay within the law and as we always do and stay consistent, measured. And of course, focused on this outcome here. So just wanted to share this with you, council. Next slide. Summer fun at the playgrounds. This, we have seen a 41% increase in usage of this program. I want to share this since 2022. I want to share this with you because it shows the importance of having activities for our youth while they're in between school years. So it's structured, it's coordinated. We have tremendous volunteer mentors out there that help facilitate organized play and activities. And I'm really, really proud and appreciative of the public works staff and the recreation part of the public, or not public works, but the Parks Department staff. And especially the recreation part dedicated this specific effort. They're in a beautiful park, so our parks staff work to keep it that way. And of course, our recreation staff facilitates and makes this happen. And so it's partnerships with the school district, free lunches for the kids. You know, it's just sports, water play, educational sessions. When I was talking about the mentors and the volunteers out there, they organize, coordinate all of that crafts games. So important, we will keep working with you, council, to ensure that this program is sustained. So, and that is it tonight, council. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Next, I'll turn to our city clerk, Ms. Hoover, for the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Younger. As President Younger stated at the beginning of the meeting, item 4H has been removed from the consent agenda. For approval on the consent agenda are the following items. A, claims and check register, approval of the following checks and electronic fund transfers. One, check numbers 411-914 through 412-046, and EFT numbers V441-85 through V442-97 in the grand total amount of $5,251,990.85. Two, regular payroll for pay period ending July 31, 2025 in the amount of $1,215,942.66. Three, regular payroll payout for pay period ending July 31, 2025 in the amount of $21,617.2. Four, regular payroll correction for the pay period ending July 31, 2025 in the amount of $1,006.25. B, minutes of council meeting, August 6, 2025. C, minutes of study session, August 13, 2025. D, confirm reappointment of Gregory Dawson to the Parks and Recreation Commission. E, confirm reappointment of Catherine Weigel to the Parks and Recreation Commission. F, change order request for performance information technologies for the wastewater HMI upgrade project. G, assignment and assumption agreement for the Public Defense Services Agreement with Yellish, Barker and Cunningham, PLLC. And I, confirm reappointment of Victoria Hilt to the Bremerton Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. This concludes the reading of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you. If any member of the public wishes to speak on any of the consent agenda items, we only ask that you state your name for the record and please let me hear comments to three minutes or less. Having said that, does any member of the public wish to comment on any of the consent agenda items?
Jose Camacho, Rock to Block, friends of Smith Cove. Thank you. You remind me every time. I appreciate it. Jose Camacho, friends of Smith Cove, Rock to Block. This is regarding consent agenda for D and 4E appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee or Commission. And as a homeless person or a formerly homeless person who has slept in the park, who has seen the sprinklers turn on, I was very disturbed. And I want you to consider not appointing these people to the Parks and Recreation Commission until we are sure policies are in place to prevent what unfortunately council member Mokler was suggesting in a Public Safety Committee meeting on 8-7-25, in which she suggested using deceit as a proposed strategy to harass the homeless. Can't we just convince the park to turn on the sprinklers so that the homeless don't settle into the park overnight? I was quite appalled by that. And even, well, more appalling or equally appalling is that this was actually discussed for eight to 10 minutes by everyone else on the Public Safety Committee as if this wasn't a stop the world kind of comment. This is really a horrible moment for me. As I said, I've slept in parks. I guess I'm a criminal. I've seen the sprinklers come on. She was suggesting that we could convince the public that turning on the sprinklers at night would be a matter of conserving water. And she wasn't exactly shot down. Tom Wolf was there, Goodnow, Denise Frey. This was actually discussed. To council members, Goodnow, at the very end, he said something like, "I don't think we should actually be hosing people down." So this is quite appalling. So because no one stopped this when it started, I think perhaps this is part of the culture. Clearly, the city is persecuting the homeless. But for it to reach the level of council members who speak about this in public in a committee called Public Safety, this is really a horrible thing that I witnessed as someone who has slept on the street and slept in the parks, slept in Bremerton's park. I've seen the sprinklers turn on. And I thought it was just for maintenance. So if it's not, the public should know about it. Please, stop the clock. Have some soul searching happen, please.
Anyone else wish to comment on the consent agenda? Mr. Sorensen, can you check online? See if there's anyone?
There is not.
So seeing no other comments from the public, I'll turn to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented with the amendment. You didn't say that.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion, a second call for the question.
Councilmember Chamberlain?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Rebelowski?
Yes.
Goodnow?
Yes.
Mokler?
Yes.
Younger?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now we have public recognition and this is to address the council on any issues, not already on the agenda. However, since we just have the consent agenda, there's no general business tonight. So please clearly state your name for the record in person and limit your comments to under three minutes. A reminder, this is not interactive and the council is here just to listen to your concerns and questions, not to have an open back and forth dialogue. Also a reminder that now that it is election season, please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. There'll be no public comments except via Zoom tonight unless prior arrangements were made through the city clerk by calling 360-473-5323 at least 24 hours prior to the meeting. Ms. Hoover, did anyone make those arrangements?
There were none.
Okay, thank you. Again, we only ask that you state your name and record for the record and please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Time or system we use so that everyone is treated fairly. With that, I now open up for public recognition.
Hey, everyone. Jocelyn, I'm with Rock the Block. I'm also with the Bremerton Prayer Walk and I come in here every time I have the opportunity to to kind of tell you what I'm seeing down on the streets and again, call for a moratorium. It's getting worse. It's not getting better. I have no less than 12 moms on the streets with children right now, on the streets with children right now, and they're not even welcome in the parks, which makes it somewhat of a normal experience for them. I mean, people are trying hard. I've got my, I've got my marine that I've been telling you guys about for three months that the resources are not there. He got jumped a couple of weeks ago in the hospital for a few days, displaced all of his stuff. I just read today that the police department is getting another resource for individuals after they get rid of everyone's stuff that comes in and brings them more stuff. The fact is, we just need to stop for a minute and breathe for a minute. We've got so many people on the streets now that are absolutely displaced. I've witnessed this. This last Saturday, I went down to the, Sunday, I went down to the prayer walk. No less than four police officers coming along and upon talking to people, is this a normal occurrence? This is a normal occurrence. They're not able to rest. And anytime they sit down, somebody comes along and shoots them along. I want to know and I want you guys to think about this. Where can someone exist in the city of Bremerton that's not lucky enough to have a home or hasn't fell upon hard times that they've lost their home or are fleeing domestic violence? I got three women fleeing domestic violence with absolutely nowhere to go with their children. YWCA is full. The shelters are full. There is absolutely no place for these women to go. And they're being persecuted on the streets. They're being persecuted at home and they have nowhere to exist. We have got to do better and we can do better. We have shown you that there are so many other opportunities and so many other options that are available to you guys and to displace, to harass, to simply put, like it's, it should be criminal what we are doing right now to our homeless individuals and friends. Our moms trying to, I mean, it's absolutely absurd to me that we can rationalize this under any level. I mean, you want to talk about being within the laws. What about the Constitution? I mean, that is the basis of all of this right now. And we are subjecting people to losing their life, liberty and property without due process of law for the most. Second, we've got First Amendment rights that are being silenced right now by the police because the Supreme Court has held that First Amendment rights and being homeless does exist here in this country. We've got to do better and Bremerton can do better. I understand we're really excited about those kids. God, what great pictures. But what about the kids who don't have more, who don't have better?
Good evening, council member. My name is Daryl Riley and I'm here tonight to request a formal censure of Councilperson Jennifer Chamberlain for conduct on becoming an elected official, specifically publicly referring to me as a fool online on another person's rant about me. This was not a policy disagreement, nor a matter of spirited debate. It was a personal insult. I've only spoken to her once since she joined the council and that was when I was a member of the Racial Equity Advisory Committee. As members of the council, you are employees of the citizens of Bremerton. That relationship demands professionalism, respect and ethical conduct. Resorting to name calling is not only unprofessional, it's high schoolish, divisive and beneath the dignity of this body. It took me a while to come forward with this moment because I didn't want to cause this body a problem. But I want to add a little context that I've never publicly shared before. Councilperson Chamberlain once worked for me. I terminated her employment on the spot after some very inappropriate behavior. When I confronted her and fired her, she slung my supplies across the room in my shop and shoulder checked me on the way out, cursing and screaming at the top of her lungs, trying to provoke me. At the time, I chose not to say anything because I just wanted her gone. A few months later, she decided to run for office and I didn't want to disrupt her campaign for city council. I'm not petty like that, so I took the high road then. But her recent public attacks on me has made it clear that she has no such regard for the reputation and dignity of others. Over the last eight years, I've added close to $4 million to the economic ecosystem of Bremerton. I've hired 350 people since 2013, providing opportunities for families. I've educated approximately 400 local kids on financial literacy, ensuring that each one left my program with a checking and savings account funded by my nonprofit. Mayor Wheeler and Chief Wolf attended the very first graduating class in 2021. These are tangible contributions that strengthen Bremerton's economic base and invest in its future. The comments made by Councilperson Chamberlain were not only directed at me personally, but indirectly dismissive of the value of those contributions and the example they set for others in the community. She took the opportunity to bandwagon and further fan the flames of an already heated and intense situation among Black community leaders and intentionally created more divisions amongst the Black community. When elected officials engage in public disrespect towards citizens, especially those who have actively worked to improve the city, it undermines trust in local government and discourages civic engagement. Her actions and behavior are unacceptable. Council President Younger, I'm asking that this council censor Councilperson Chamberlain. This is not about silencing this agreement. It's about upholding a standard of conduct that reflects the respect our citizens deserve. Thank you for your time and I trust you will take this matter seriously in the interest of public integrity and this council and its citizens and set an example for Bremerton. Looking forward to hearing your decision.
Jose Camacho, friends of Smith Cove, Rock to Block. I just gave an example of literally seeing deceit being proposed as policy as a way to effectuate the actual harassment chasing away of the homeless and from a council member to other council members. But I have actually been talking about Bremerton's problem of deceit as policy since the rig Evergreen Point project came under our radar across the street from our home. Because when you look at that, it's all about deceit. The major deceit is that somehow state law doesn't apply to the magnificent town of Bremerton. The Shoreline Management Act has never been repeated back to me by any one of you lawyers, council members, planning commission. I spent an eternity in comp planning citing that state statute and I was stonewalled because that means the conversation will go back to the Evergreen Point and that would be not good for your favorite developers in town, Wesley Larson and Steve Segal. Part of that stonewall is that the ecological stewardship mandate of the recreation designation overlaid on Smith Cove and Evergreen Park was disappeared. It was as if it didn't matter. You never see it turn up in a DCD analysis, never any discussion, certainly not in comp planning because God forbid, you should actually have to do some thinking, including the council member whose backyard is Smith Cove. So I go to Marvin Williams and in less than an hour, I got more transparency from the Navy than in about two years, one and a half years of the city. Smith Cove has a local restoration plan in place. And in July of 2022, a city agent, Tom Nucky, approached the Navy invoking environmental justice. And ongoing right now, the Navy is willing to try, if we give it support, a restoration of Smith Cove, which basically takes the confluence study from about 2017. They're willing to go the whole shebang and restore. So I had to ask him this because everything in this town that happens is monetized by developers immediately. So I asked the Navy, is a mitigation person happened to be Steve Segal? Does waterman mitigation have a role in this? And the answer was yes. The city is still finding ways to slip special favors to developers. It ain't going to happen.
Okay, anyone else for public recognition?
Namara Levine, I'm here on behalf of my colleague and friend of the community, Martita May of Kayak Immigrant Assistance Center, who is imploring the city of Bremerton to make explicit their support for the Latino community, given all of the continued troubles that have been facing the community and legal action that's been taken against the community and illegal action that's been taken against the community. The Latino community is your friends. They're your neighbors. They're your coworkers. They're the folks who you see when you're just walking down the street or driving past you in your car. And I think that I also agree with what the ask of Martita May, which is to provide explicit support for the Latino community and make explicit our commitment to the community. Thank you. Fun rink town. Bye.
So I apologize for that interruption. Anyone else for public recognition? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public recognition. Normally I would ask the clerk to go on to general business items, but there aren't any tonight. So now I'll go to our council for council reports. This is an opportunity for council members to provide an update on any issues or events taking place in their district, announce any events that they recently attended or plan to attend or speak on any other city related topic. Tonight, we'll start on my far right with District Six Councilmember Anna Mokler. Councilmember Mokler.
So before I go on to my full council report, the parks are watered with the sprinklers. It's not a deterrent thing. It was a dumb idea of mine to propose doing it at night. And I'd really, really like to exonerate Counselor Goodnow and Counselor Frye, who pretty much sat on me and very quietly and politely said, "This is a dumb idea." It was my dumb idea. What can I say? I have them. I would also like to mention that I have been proposing to this council a number of policies of relief for the homeless community in Bremerton. I have been working with Common Street and attempting to work with Northwest Hospitality and Doc, not Doc Love the Kids, God's Broken Home to create a day tent where people could gather in a dignified way during the day when shelters are often closed, where there would be benches and heat and portasands and hand wash and service providers and garbage cans. Just not a palace in any way, but a place where people could be. Not only would this benefit all homeless people directly, it would benefit them over the long term because service providers say, "Hey, I think I can hook you up with something. Let me get back to you in a couple of days." Well, if people aren't there, you can't find them to connect with them. If the, so a day tent would just really make sense. So I've been proposing that to this council off and on since last September. I'm not going to go on and on about all of the things I've done, but I'm happy to talk to anybody about them. I'm going to move on to my council report at this time. Okay, District Six, next slide, please. There are more slides, right? Okay, good. So I am trying to help build an environmental coalition in the city of Bremerton. So my monthly town hall for September will have three very brief presentations from Great Peninsula Conservancy, from Kitsap Environmental Coalition and from our own Director of Parks, Mr. Tim Barker, on how they can be good allies. And for the rest of it, it's not presentations, it's question and answer. It's let's talk to each other. What do you want to be fighting for? I think it's no news to anybody on this council that I'm very strong for preserving the Red Creek Wetlands. Everybody here, okay, yeah. But is that what the people of Bremerton want? Is that what my constituents want? That's the purpose of this eco forum is to figure out what are our prime concerns? Yeah. Next slide, please. And along with that same thing, there is a native plant workshop on Tuesday, September 16th. It's up in Palms Bow, but it's the Salish Trees, it's Kitsap Conservation District, Great Peninsula Conservancy and Kitsap County Native Plants. A lot of the parts of our comp plans talk about the necessity for planting noxious, for planting native plants. And this is part of the reason why, because they're drought tolerant, because they encourage the pollinators that are native to here. It's a much simpler, more resilient system. Next slide, please. Last slide, I believe. Okay, so my hydrangea won a blue ribbon at the county fair today. On the other hand, my Dahlia didn't even like get a white ribbon. It was just put in Dahlia segregation, just like this Dahlia shouldn't be with our dahlias. So, you know, you So, you know, you win some, you lose some. The, I really liked the county fair. I like the quilts. I like the 4H. I like watching people make stuff. So it's happening. I don't know anything about the rodeo or the extreme bulls, but I did get a chance today to watch kids showing their goats. So that was fun. I don't really have anything more just to add as, as our council president says every, at every one of these meetings, that you can reach out for responses or answers as far as we have them to either city.council@bremertonwa.gov. If you want to reach me personally, anna.mockler@bremertonwa.gov. Thank you all, and I'd like to thank everyone here for showing up.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Goodnow.
First, I will kind of back up Anna Mockler. Normally doesn't come up with those kinds of solutions, and I think it surprised a little bit. But sometimes our thinking brings us to weird conclusions, and sometimes we open our mouths before we maybe think something all the way through. So, you know, one in the negative column and a lot of good ideas in the other column, so. Let's see, I think I've got a couple of slides. Just some information about what the Charleston District is doing. There's a great picture of it there. Is there another slide? So the Charleston Business District has been really doing some amazing thing. They've really come together. And they, we were looking for a way to have folks share their newsletter. They're doing a newsletter kind of as a PDF every month. And if you'd be interested in getting it, I'm going to talk slowly. If you want to snatch, snatch, snap. Thank you. A picture of the QR, nope, you don't take a pic. Oh, my God, I'm showing my age. I just turned 60, if you didn't know. So snap, you don't snap a picture. You scan the QR code. Get my grandkids out here to help. Anyways, if you'd like to get information from them, they're doing some great stuff. Dave, save me. Next slide. All right. Also, I want to thank some of the folks. But what we're looking at is some amazing volunteers down there on the benches that I believe all came from Quincy Square when we were preparing for the new. We were able to repurpose those, and there would be some other things, I think, in the future that you'll see pop back up. But we were able to support Calo Avenue in the Charleston District with those benches, which were originally donated to the city by the Bremerton Rotary. So it's really great to be able to continue that support, and I believe they've all been repowder coated and things like that. So I think that's all I have. So thanks, everyone, for being here, and I will give up my time.
Okay, thank you. Now to Vice President Obelowski.
Little brown boxes, District Four, in case you're wondering. Can I have next slide, please? So my next district meeting is going to be September 11th at 5 o'clock. It generally goes to about 6:30. And my featured speakers next month are going to be Marwan Cameron, founder of Gather Together Grow Together, Don Michelle Wilson, co-founder of Rock the Block, and she's also a director of Socks Box. So this is a really great opportunity for the community to ask questions about the work that they're doing primarily with our neighbors without homes. And you can ask them questions and share your ideas and sign up to volunteer. So that's Thursday, September 11th at 5 o'clock, and it's at the Bremerton Food Line. They've got a pretty nice lobby, so that's where we hold our meetings. Thank you. So next slide, please. Oh, I think Councilmember Coughlin is going to talk more about this, but I attended the meeting that the Navy held last week. And make sure you get your comments in on time, and please go to the websites if you haven't read what the plan is, because there are options. The first option is do nothing, and the second option is a new dry dock, big one, that the Navy prefers, and it's very close to Harborside Park. And the other one, the Dry Dock at Mouring A, is more kind of midyard, and that also includes a parking garage. But I'll let Councilmember Coughlin go into more depth on that. Next slide, please. So Friday night is movie night outside up at the Village up on the corner of Perry. It's $3. There's going to be food vendors and stuff set up at 6 o'clock. But it's only $3 to get in there, and it's going to be a lot of fun, and that's a pretty low-cost way for a family to go out and see a movie together. Okay, next slide, please. So Doc is having his wonderful event, the Going Back to School Event. It's at Lyons Park on Saturday. There's going to be free barbecue, free bounce houses. And I don't know, is the park director is here, but I hear there's nine bounce houses coming. Some face painting, snow cones, kickball, all kinds of resources, free backpacks, free school supplies. And we're also going to, because we've heard you loud and clear that you, a lot of people are uncomfortable with our policy of not being able to speak back to you when you come and talk to us about an issue going on. So we're going to have a booth called Ask Your Council, and we'll have some free giveaways, of course. But you come up and talk to us about issues that you have, suggestions that you have. And I think it's going to be a lot of fun. It's going to be a warm day, but the kids will be worn out by the time you get home. So next slide, please, if I have another one. Nope, that's it. Okay, I hope to see y'all on Saturday, and they're still looking for volunteers, anybody who wants to help, especially I know they need some help with the giant kickball game. So we do have some volunteers, but we need more. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Coughlin.
Well, thank you, Council President, and look forward to being there as well this coming weekend. Fantastic. Just to respond to one public comment, do you want to say the council issued a letter? I was proud to write unanimously back in February reaffirming the council's commitment to protecting the rights of people in Bremerton, and that also includes regardless of race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and also regardless of country of origin or immigration status. And it does outline that the Bremerton Police Department does not participate in direct immigration enforcement, and except for very rare circumstances, does not inquire about a person's immigration status. So I want to make sure that letter is known, that it's out there, and that is this council's policy. But I thank you for bringing that to the attention and for Martita May's fantastic work in our community. All right, as mentioned, I think my first slides are on the Navy Dry Dock. So this is a project where construction is actually expected over 15 years. So the majority in the first couple of years, but it is going to be a very long project in the city. And there are certainly some tangible economic benefits with the Navy. It's, you know, great to have a stable 15,000 employer nearby, but it also comes with challenges as a federal institution. Of course, we don't collect direct tax dollars like we would at the private employer, and it presents both challenges and opportunities for the city. But this is a big project that the citizens of Bremerton should have an opportunity to weigh in on, and people do until early September here. So there was an article in the Kitsap Sun. As Counselor Obelowski noted, there was an open meeting the other week. But if we go to the next slide, and I'll show it at the end, there is a whole website that that kind of summarizes the Navy's alternatives that they will be deciding on, and they're soliciting input on. So as Counselor Obelowski mentioned, they have three alternatives. Alternative one, as is always required by law, is, okay, what's the impact of doing nothing? And realistically, they're going to do something because they have produced a class of aircraft carriers that are in production and in service now that there's no facility that exists that can service them. So the Navy is looking, if you just send a shipyard to be the facility that can service them on the West Coast. And so realistically, they will choose between alternatives two and three. So alternative two, this if it wasn't confusing enough, alternative two is to take Dry Dock Three, which is the dry dock closest to the ferry terminal, and essentially get rid of the existing Ford shop, the large building that says, welcome to Bremerton, move some of those out to Banger, and to retrofit or to basically redo this dry dock to a larger capacity, multi-mission dry dock that can service those new aircraft carriers. And so this will come with a lot of construction and a lot of activity right next to downtown and the ferry terminal. And then, of course, as aircraft carriers and other ships are serviced at that dry dock, they'll be serviced, you know, right, right close to downtown. And so I can imagine on the positive side for the city, a lot of traffic to our downtown, people hopefully shopping and and spending dollars downtown, but also impacts on traffic, parking, and of course, noise, which affects not only downtown, but across the water. And the next slide shows the other alternative, alternative three, which is mentioned is to work on what's labeled there in the middle on Mouring A, and to have that be the basically new dry dock where facilities can take place. And then alternative three also includes the future parking garage, as mentioned, kind of in the Calo Charleston area, which could bring economic activity down there and direct traffic and parking away from downtown and more towards the west side. So the study kind of nicely summarizes the impacts of each similar timelines. Obviously, there's different considerations the Navy's looking at in terms of the dollar amounts and how long each one takes. But I really do encourage citizens of Bremerton to comment on how it'll impact their daily lives over the next, you know, a couple of years, but really, really 15. And my hope, and I say more than, more than hope from conversations I've had, is I really do think the Navy will take these comments into account. And I hope that they're not just choosing between alternatives two and three, but as we've done this council, when multiple alternatives come to us, they hopefully take the best of both, and they listen to the concerns, and they listen to the potential impacts, and they find an alternative, say, four, that really takes all those comments into account and is hopefully a win-win for the city and for the Navy. So the last slide on this. Oops, sorry. They summarize all the, I forgot. There's a nice table. You can go to the website. So go one more slide. But they do summarize nicely all the differences. But so there is a website. It's very long. Bremerton Waterfront Improvements EIS.com for environmental impact study. And you go on that website, nice summaries, and there is a comment form on how to submit comments. If you want to be old school, you can submit in writing by snail mail, but file the comments, and they will be reviewed. And I look forward to making my own comment as an individual and a council member, and I hope everybody is able to chime in. And then just two last slides. Fun activities going on. So we have the Blackberry Festival coming up, August 30th, 31st, and September 1st. As part of this, there will be a pop-up ferry between Silverdale and Bremerton. So if folks aren't aware, Kitsap Transit is studying the feasibility of bringing back a mini mosquito fleet, starting with a couple routes, and Bremerton-Silverdale and Bremerton-Bainbridge are two of the 400 consideration. And so this will just be a temporary one, but it's possible that long-term we have a little pop-up ferry between us and the other communities. So check that out. And the last one is a big thanks to Manette Neighborhood Coalition and Business Association doing music in Manette. There is, they're going through August 21st, and there is one this Thursday, and I believe it's, oh, God, Mikey the Mad Scientist. It's a kids-oriented one. So I've been to it before. It's fantastic. So if you have kids, definitely take them this Thursday. And that's it for my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fry.
I don't have a formal report tonight. I'm, I'm trying to save my strength for this fall when we're going to have a lot of things coming before council regarding District Two. View Ridge Safe Routes to School Project is coming up. That Warren Avenue Bridge is going to rear its head again. And of course, we're looking forward to hearing something on the the low-barrier hybrid shelter coming up in District Two. So work is going on behind the scenes on all of that, and it's been impressive. I do have to say, the Safe Routes to School Project at View Ridge has been going really well. I almost don't want to say that because it might jinx it, but we'll be having, I'll have a district meeting, kind of combine it with a public meeting on that first stage of the View Ridge project, probably in November, December area, to give folks enough time to chime in about the impacts of construction on the neighborhood. So really appreciate the work that Public Works has been doing on all that. And with that, I guess it's stay tuned. There's a lot of things percolating.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Chamberlain.
I don't, I don't have any slides tonight. I don't really have any intention for a report either. I do want to publicly reply to some accusations that were made by Counselor Fry about my district being park-rich, and I will say it indeed is park-rich, and I'm very proud of it. And you have all of the commercial zones, however. You took my favorite coffee shop in the latest census redistricting. So, and with that, I would normally be advertising the cleanup, but I believe this month it's happening in Port Orchard. The one that normally comes out of Cafe Profeto, my favorite coffee shop, which is now in District Two, no longer in District One. I, you know, I appreciate everybody who comes and gives public comment. All that I'm really going to say is I never perpetrated violence against the person that came here and said I did. I'm a little spicy, but I'm not that spicy. With that, that's all I really have to say. I appreciate everybody coming here tonight and look forward to what's coming in the fall, as Counselor Fry said. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And with that, we will now go to executive session. This is 10 minutes to discuss pending litigation as allowed under RCW 42.30.110, Princess is one, Princess I, no action is anticipated. After that, we'll come back here, and we will gavel the meeting closed, we'll adjourn the meeting, and then we will proceed to go upstairs for an exempt closed session, which are allowed under RCW 42.30.140, Princess is four, Princess B. So at this point in time, we are now going to go to executive session.
Very, very thank you. And bye.
Okay, we just got out of executive session and before we adjourned uh next regular study session will be next Wednesday, August twenty seventh beginning at five P M six floor council conference room with a remote option available by zoom. Again, once we adjourn, we're gonna go take a ten minute break, but uh we're gonna go up to example session. So this meeting is now adjourned.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.